Approval of July the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five minutes. So I get a motion on that, please.
Make the motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five minutes.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Francis?
Yes.
Commissioner Short?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miles?
Yes.
Commissioner Stowe?
Yes. Next on the agenda is a zone map amendment for MBR properties, property located at the corner of Heath Street and Estill Avenue. Currently Zone B one, proposed Zone I one. Representative here for them?
Yes. How are you guys this afternoon?
Fine.
Good. We have filed a application for a zoning map amendment. They've already got it pulled up here. This is a lot that my client, MBR, Representative Mike Rice, is here on. The lot is currently B one. He's looking to have it re-classed to I one. Just for point of reference, on that corner of Heath and Estill, he also owns the properties that are all adjacent to it on the backside through his company. And that's really the long and short of it. That's a, I'm sure everyone's familiar with it. It's a fairly industrial area of town. I think his plan would be to do some light industrial warehousing, something along those lines. There's not a set plan yet for that exactly. But that's, that's what our application's for.
Now, is that the property that Mike had the storage unit, those storage for vehicles and stuff, or is it across the street from there?
I'm not sure. Mike, can you?
As shown there, Mr. Estill is the, that's when the concrete plant owned it. It had a lot of things on it.
You can come.
Pick you up for the record.
It's right on the corner.
When the concrete company sold out to the larger company, they finally cleared all that out. I made a trade with them, and I own a lot on the other side. They needed it, and I needed this one. And it touches those other four properties I have. So we have cleaned it all now, so it's not updated.
Okay.
Shot of it, but there's never been anything there.
Oh, okay.
Other junk stuff they had parked there in the past twenty years, probably.
Okay. Kevin, you got anything?
I just had some quick highlights for the thought process. The minimum building size is, is one acre for, for an I one. Number two, the, the, the front setbacks, side setbacks, and rear setbacks are twenty-five feet. So that, that's going to eat a lot up, which may constitute a board of adjustments for a variance, for a future development plan of, of that nature. Just something to think about. And, you know, tho- those setbacks don't leave much room. It'd be approximately around twenty-three hundred square feet of room if I one setbacks are applicable to the end. So.
You'll need to think about that, Mike.
I do have a building. My apologies. I do have it.
That'll fit.
Sketch. Spencer did all that for me. And basically, it, it's catted, cornered a little bit, facing the northeast side. It, it's not a drastic, but I did, I mean, he understood about the parking, and we, I said, I just want, and it was equivalent to fifty by seventy building is about all we could max out in there.
Right.
But I do have those preliminary plans, if that, if that would help. But I, I didn't, he didn't see any problem with it.
Right. And, and a development plan's not what we're here to talk about, but just things to consider, you know?
But I understand.
But if that works out, you know?
I understand.
We should be okay.
Got more questions on? Okay. Get a motion on that.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the zone map amendment for MBR properties, property located at the corner of Heath Street and Estill Avenue. Current Zone B one, proposed Zone Industrial One, and that we approve the findings of fact.
I'll second it.
Before I take the vote, was there any public comment?
Excuse me?
Before I take the vote, was there any public comment? I assume not. Pardon me. Okay. Commissioner Francis?
Yes.
Commissioner Short?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miles?
Yes.
Commissioner Stowe?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Next on the agenda is the proposal Chipotle restaurant adjacent to eight fifty-nine Eastern Bypass. See, uh, Mr. Worley's here.
It's Chipotle.
Chipotle.
Get it right.
It's all you, I think, Karen.
I don't know if it actually is my lead or not on this.
Sorry, sorry.
No, no problem. No problem. Sure, thank you. Tyler, do you have that plan that you could pull up?
I can if you want.
So I didn't, I didn't know whether I was going to take the lead here, or, or Kevin and Rob were. But after the last time that you all saw this, I got with the, the property owner, who's also the engineer, and we've worked with them. And I think we've resolved a lot of the concerns that, that were there. And, and we're able to kind of show at this stage that this is not really something that needs a lot of discretionary, you know, review. That this really was more of a ministerial issue, that there was some misunderstanding of where the, you know, exactly where some of this was going to sit. And so really, I came here today to answer any questions, but I think Kevin and Rob are in agreement that, that everything is okay on this and that there's no action that needs to be taken or not taken by this board. But Rob or Kevin, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
No, that's correct.
So.
The only problem that I have with this plan is, and you know I would.
Sure.
The problem I have with this plan is that you've only got one exit way out there by KFC. And you have another exit that goes like this, and you can't turn left. Are you going to close off the other way to get out where, where Menards is?
And this would not.
You would not?
It would not. So the drive aisle is either twenty-three feet or twenty-five feet. I'm, I'm not sure. And it stays the same. Now visually, because of the way that the parking has changed, it looks like parking is laying over into the drive aisle. But the drive aisle remains, it even has the same, uh, the, uh, concrete, you know, curb cut. So that drive aisle coming from Menards stays the same all the way through. The old, and the traffic pattern going into the drive-up window is the same traffic pattern as is drawn for the parking that exists where the, the Chipotle will lay over. So that same driving pattern and that same drive aisle and space is, is unchanged. It's just you're going to have a building there i- in the, in the middle of it now. And the drive-up concept as opposed to drive-through, you order ahead of time, and then you just drive up and pick it up at the window and drive around. So it doesn't need the same amount of stacking that a drive, that a drive-through window where you would pull up, wait for the guy in front of you to order, then drive around. But even still, and this, this rendering doesn't show it, but there's a rendering that has some green highlights in it that they show, like eight cars could be stacked in this before it would get back into the drive aisle. And, and so there, and there never should be eight. You know, it should be only one or two at a time. So we, I think that when you look at a couple different views of it, then it makes it more clear that the drive aisle coming from Menards stays clear the whole way and shouldn't ever be backed, you know, blocked or backed up.
Okay, so you will have parking on both sides of the road?
That's correct.
Can, can you not make a way to have just one entrance exit for the parking on the, the side of the road that faces the bypass? So that you don't have cars constantly coming in and out, and we just have one entrance exit for that? Because, you know, that is a, has turned into a service road between one light by Menards and the shopping complex.
And it should stay that way.
Pardon me?
It should remain that way.
Well, yeah, but now you're going to have cars coming from parking on both sides, from one side of Chipotle and across the roadway for, also parking for Chipotle.
That, that's how the parking pattern through the entire Carriage Gate Plaza is. All of the drive aisles have, have parking, you know, intermixed to them. But again, it, your drive aisle stays the same width and the same traffic pattern. So if somebody's pulling in or out of a parking space, it may make somebody have to stop for the couple of seconds as them to pull in and out of a parking space. But there's already parking that exists there that would, that would do that as well, from, from what I can tell.
I, I don't think, I don't think so. I think what you're going to have is you're going to have, how many, how many parking spots that bound next to the bypass? How many? Were there ten, twelve? Do you know?
I, I, counting there, I'm not sure exactly how many there are.
You're telling me right on the, right on the bypass, looking toward the left?
Well, because if you're, if you're leaving that shopping complex, turning left by what you hope will become Chipotle and go into the stoplight.
I'm, I'm, I'm listening to you, Ms. Perkins. I'm sorry. I'm trying to find a better picture rendering while you're talking.
Okay.
I'm not just like texting.
Then what I'm saying is, if I'm going down that little road, I'm going to have cars coming at me, possibly pulling in and out on both sides into a service road. And I don't think that's logical. I don't think that's right. Frankly, I think Chipotle should build their building in the center of the shopping center because they have tons of space there. But I understand they want to be front and center on the bypass.
Well, and they, and they take up such a small footprint. I mean, they, they literally are going to fit into an existing parking lot up against a building. That's part of the reason that this is attractive to them. Their, their model is not a, a lot of traffic. You know, Chipotle's model is come in, come out. They don't need a lot of space. So that's really why that piece has been chosen. And so I think the owners would prefer that the other out parcels be for maybe larger or better. But I understand, I'm now understanding better your, your thought about the, the parking.
Right.
But again, throughout all sorts of shopping centers, there's parking on and off drive, drive aisles. And if there's any delay at all, it is just while somebody pulls in or out of a parking spot. It's not like a traffic jam sort of situation.
That's when they're contained within a shopping complex. This is a, a si- pretty much a road. And they're trying to put parking on both sides of that, and so people would be pulling in and out on that one side. What I'm saying is, can you not, the side that's going to be adjacent to the bypass, can they make just one entrance and out of that? Or will they not have enough room for that?
I'm, I'm not, I'm not following you, the, the, the side adjacent to the bypass. It's with one entrance or, or not. I'm sorry that I'm not following because it's.
For the parking, so that you don't have twelve cars pulling out into that little service road.
Sure. Again, I don't think it creates a safety issue. It's an inconvenience issue. There has to be ample parking for the business that both meets the business needs and matches your ordinance. Again, I don't know off the top of my head what that is. I think that, the, while, while I understand what you're saying, this was meant for a connectivity purpose, but it, it is still a drive aisle within a shopping center, just like the drive aisle through the entirety of the shopping center.
I disagree with you there.
And, and making that be connected into the Menards actually burdened this shopping center owner's property to the benefit of Menards traffic. And so.
Well, no, because there was always that road that connected to the light, and then Menards was, had to connect to that. So it was always there as a road to
Sure.
the light that goes across from, uh, to the other shopping center.
Sure.
That connects with Kroger.
Yeah.
You know, it's kind of down from Kroger, but it's the only, it's the first light that people can also get to, to turn left from Kroger's if they're going.
Sure. And I, I guess that's where, just conceptually, I, you know, we, we see it, we see this particular piece differently. I understand that there is going to be some parking onto the drive aisle, or in and out of the drive aisle. But the drive aisle remains unchanged. This meets all of the regulations of your development ordinance and as far as the safety standards and the traffic concern standards. And so that's why I believe our, our, talking with, you know, Kevin and Rob, that we came to the fact that this really should not affect that drive aisle and should not be a problem.
Well, it will. But regardless, then you're talking about extending that little parking area out closer to the bypass, correct? You're going to build that out so that you do have more room.
So maybe if I keep over here, I could help because I'm, I'm having trouble.
Yeah.
So when you say the parking area will be built out, are you talking about this parking area or this parking area?
Parking area to the right.
This parking area.
Yeah. And then you've got, can I come too?
You can't build that one out because you got the hill right there.
Well, don't just block it up. You can really, you want. I'm thinking it may bring a safety factor. Think about it. You've got a drive through to get to the other side. And then you're going to have cars pulling in and out. That's what's good one to.
I worry there is mining details of the development plan. D-HO has designed some great work to be extended out into the driveway bypass. That is great, which, which will pull essentially all of those parking stalls down there. For.
That's correct.
For alignment.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's, I think that's what's great.
I could just go to that thing.
Close that off so they can go here.
They can only go there.
So that you not, you don't have all of this congestion.
You mean, you mean not put a curb in here a little bit? Yeah, I don't know that they would, that there would be enough room to bring the road in there. But I think this is, but I think this is a great picture to show, this is the curb cut of the drive aisle that remains unchanged. This is existing parking. This is existing parking with the same traffic mechanism as the drive, as the drive up window. So you see, the drive aisle always stays this way. It just, there's a building right here.
Okay. So these will be able to pull out that way? Don't have to pull in?
No, ma'am. They, they now, this will be changed because the building will be here. These will now face out this way.
So that's what I, that's my issue, that you've got cars coming up in left direction, and I think that's an impediment to the traffic flow. And my other issue is if you pull this out and, I'm just arguing, but if you pull that out, what if we decide twenty years from now, we make a lot, pass up six landowners as opposed to four? Then all of a sudden, you mess up the, this place.
Well, that's true. Before that, the State Highway Traffic Department will have to pay this landowner for doing that. And will, and will have to take on, and will have to take on all of that to the benefit of the community, so.
I don't know, just.
Sure, I, I.
Preston, Preston, while you're there, please. What's the traffic flow like when you come into the business? Is it go counterclockwise or clockwise? It is the drive, the driving part.
Just see that, that arrow points like that.
Yeah.
The existing traffic flow, it would be, it would be like this.
Gotcha.
Where is the building for the new place?
It would sit basically right here. Because these, these would still, these will still exist, the ones that are not taken out because of the construction. And, you know, this is, I think, I don't know if it's directly right there. I think it's actually moved to about right here and, and turned.
I don't know.
But I, I, I think again, I think visually, upon first look, it seemed a little, a little cramped and a little confusing. And when you scale back and you look at this, you're putting a very small building into just what you had existed there, which should be an issue. And this design, while there's still a few admin specs that Mr. Monti has to work out, but Kevin meets all of the regulations we've developed.
Yeah, so when, if I'm going down there that way, I only have to worry about the traffic coming, backing out on the right side. They can't come in on the left side.
On both sides.
The, I mean, they, yes, they, they could come in from the left side and make a left-hand turn into the Chipotle.
Yeah, but I mean, they are going to come like this, straight out.
Yeah.
They will.
They will.
They will. You'll have traffic pulling into that service road from both sides.
As you do now.
Yeah, but nobody uses it. I mean, and it's.
I, Chipotles are popular. I, I don't think that you're going to see this being like an all-day-long, you know, line of traffic trying to get in there. I mean, there's going to be people that pull in for their lunch and pull back out. And it's designed, it's very purpose of the drive-up window is to, is to get people in and out very, very fast.
Do they have seating?
Uh, they will probably have limited seating in there. I mean, Chipotle's have, are small. It's more of a takeout model, but they do have limited seating.
Do you think it amounts to a safety issue at all?
Well, I will always say, notwithstanding poor judgment of public drivers, but, you know, being private property, it does meet drive aisle widths. It meets the backing out of ninety-degree parking standard widths.
Public safety, I'd say is.
Yeah.
Inside.
If I can go back, let's see here. I'd like to show, let's see. If I can zoom out here. What'll happen here? What's it? Well, gosh, Matty, they're, they're building everything. What's happening over here is the exact same thing in existence. The easement comes around, and you'll notice when you drive through here, you know, we have parking all along the bypass. But we, we have maintained a wide enough drive aisle per our standards all the way up to this stop bar, which would then also carry right on straight through here and out. It's, it's essentially identical, and, and these guys have met the same criteria that Chipotle will ultimately have to meet as well through, through the plan review process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Ms. Perkins, I don't thi- I don't think you're entirely wrong. I just think we dis- I just think, I just think we disagree on, uh,
Oh, sometimes we do.
On, on exactly how bad the effects will be. I would say I'd like to lodge a complaint. Even on a plan review, I get to talk to you guys just all the time. And then Rodney had a five-minute zone change show, so.
You get the hard ones, though.
I do, I do.
I'm sorry.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the zone determination for wedding venue. Rod?
If you would, Mr. Chairman, I'll, uh,
Okay.
I'll add some comments at the end of the discussion.
Say it again.
What's the address?
One sixteen.
We, we may have saved the hard one actually for last. I, I really don't know. I don't know. Tyler, do you want us to take off, or do you want to set the table? What?
Go ahead.
Just go ahead. Okay, can, can you pull up a map?
Yeah, I can.
Can you tighten that up just a little bit? Yeah, so to, to set the table for the commission just a little bit, several months ago, probably six months ago, I had started a discussion with Tyler Frazier about Kim's potential use of this property. use of this property. As some of you may or may not know, this was Gilbert Miller's former house on Miller Drive. And originally, that space was licensed for a, uh, multi-use, I guess, stepped rehab facility, if I'm using the right word.
Resident treatment.
Residential treatment. Um, there was a lot of pushback from the neighborhood. Um, I think that was prob, probably had some traction that, that you folks heard about sometime. And, you know, wanting to be a good member of the community, we've kinda thought of maybe some other ways that we could use the property. It's, it's a beautiful track of land. The house is very historic-looking, it's, it's part of that neighborhood. And when I started talking to Mr. Frazier, the idea of an event venue came up, like small wedding venue, something along those lines. And when we started looking at the comprehensive plan, there's not really a conditional use or a use that describes that anywhere. So our plan was to come to this commission and say, okay, you give us what, how do you deem this use and where do we fit in your comprehensive plan and ask for a determination of that. Um, and that's why we're here. We're, we're open to a discussion, I guess, for lack of a better word. And Kevin, I, is that?
Sure. Um, I did a little research, so, you know, when, when you look at a wedding venue, you know, we have a lot of explicit categories in our land use chart, which some are a little vague, some are very explicit. So instead of just looking at a wedding venue and having another explicit use, I thought of social assembly. Now, a wedding venue can be categorized by the Kentucky Building Code as, as being an assembly or an event area. So maybe we shouldn't focus on just a wedding venue as we should a, an, an assembly of some type. So that way, we, we have a much more friendly adaptation that we as staff can look at that and say, okay, if it's a social assembly, we can say wedding venue fits into that and then we're able to move forward. But what we, what we're tasked with today is that, you know, also churches are certainly a assembly, but it's explicit. So I don't wanna go back and redefine, you know, what an assembly is and start pulling in churches and, and schools and parks and recreation, which may fall under that same term. But since they are listed individually and they have conditional uses and, and whatnot in, in different zones, I think we should leave those particular items alone. But if you entertained a social assembly, then it could apply to the remainder of those smaller items, such as a wedding venue. So if we think about where we would want those, then maybe social events and things should, should play in your mind on how that will reflect to, you know, whether we allow it in a residential zone or any of our commercial zones or, or what have. So, um, with that being said, you know, I also have in my motor vehicle parking standards, you know, a term called mass assembly, which doesn't sort of correlate with our use charts. But we do have something in there so that we can determine parking and things of that nature associated with those certain types of uses. We just need to get out of the weeds first so that we can apply parking standards or what, what may apply. So quickly, you know, our churches are permitted in R2, R3, B1, B2, B3, P1, PUD, NAG, sort of an assembly, but it's, it's individualized. Churches are conditional in R1As, Bs, Cs, B4s. So again, I think we should think about how really you're going to impact any surrounding zone if, if you pick a zone or zones. So I, I think individualizing a, a, a bit of language, I would recommend social assembly and then essentially up to you guys as to what zones you felt necessary.
Yeah, and, and if I can just follow up with that, I use the term wedding venue, but I think if you speak to her, we're looking at, at things like retirement parties, birthday parties, uh, things, reunions, things of that nature. I'm not looking at a, I don't think we're looking at a mass, huge venue space. I would call it almost light assembly. My, you know what I'm saying? Very, uh, low-density type events, uh, which it's a large enough track of land that this particular track, I think, would lend itself to that. So in, in social assembly, that's a good, that's a good compromise term. That's a, I think that makes some sense.
In, in the Kentucky Building Code, there's actually a broad term for the definition of assembly. There's actually three different versions of this, but to keep it very simple, um, through our use charts, you know, assembly can also be dictated by eating and drinking establishments. It can also be defined as a public transit, where you're waiting on the bus and there's five people. That, that is an assembly. So if, if we work with social assembly and then get a definition from, from the public as to what they're doing or, or whatever project is, then we can figure out, okay, we have something it can fall in with a little thought process of, of where these items might need to be, and then we as staff can, can run with it. We've got churches, we've got bars, we've got, uh, all that stuff specked out, individualized. I don't think that'll ever be a problem. We just need that little go-to section to suck in all of these things, like the birthday parties and, and the graduation parties and, uh, well, maybe I shouldn't say parties. That's probably a bad word. Uh, assemblies, uh, or events. And if, if we can find a home for that language, I think it, it would help us out greatly.
And it needs to be under R1 and R2 also. I mean, it would have to be almost across the board because they're in R1.
That's up to you. That's what you guys are here to say.
But there are a lot of lovely old homes that, yeah, which that fits.
It's 102 years old, so.
Right.
Or if you didn't want it under R1, because moving right next to houses and stuff.
No, but that's where she is. And there are a lot of older homes that are, gosh, that are just beautiful, that are in a midst, um, you know, smaller homes have grown up around it, but you sell, it'd be a lovely place to have.
But once you do R1, then anybody that comes in besides her can put it in R1.
But if we do it a, a conditional, then.
You would have, you would have to meet all of your other requirements.
Yeah, you have to get so much space around you or parking or.
And it's almost four acres.
Yeah, oh, I know where you're talking about. Yeah, I think it's perfect. I think it's a great idea, but we gotta figure out.
They, they would be a lot of.
Language.
Deciding factors through plan review, you know, you know, we hear parking a lot. You know, you can, you can have a, a beautiful house, three stories, but it's set on a one-acre, or I'm sorry, a one-eighth acre lot and you, you can't pull off the parking. Now, parking is established by my counterpart and the other department and myself, and if you can't pull off that parking to house, you know, people.
Yeah.
Then you would not be able, unfortunately, to do that. In this case, they, they have quite a bit to mow. So, um, you know, you could look at this in light of, if, if, let's give you an example. If you did not do residential, you know, then their, their option would be a conditional use. Uh, they would seek a conditional use for this property through the Board of Adjustments. But if you happen to agree that this particular zone is adequate with all of the other regulations that would fall it in the background downstairs, if you think that would be ample enough to protect a residential zone, then.
To me, this is a business. And if they wanna do it, just change the zone, but I think it should be a B2 or B3. I don't think you should put it in R area, conditional or otherwise. It's a business. And if, if they wanna change the zoning, that's fine. I mean, you know, because it's right up front, it's not backed by the homes, et cetera, so I think that would be the better way to do it. That way, anybody comes in, it's gotta be where business area is.
But that's spot zoning, right? Can we do that?
Well, it's after the front area, so it's really not spot zoning. It's really just, it's really not a home anymore. It's really a.
Well, it could be.
Spot zoning is really more, you got R1s on both sides and you take, you put a business in the middle. Uh, that's really more spot zoning. It's, you know, you're changing the area a lot. This really is moved out, if I call right, and it's, it would be a business. I mean, I could put a 7-Eleven there or whatever, if, you know, if I could.
You don't wanna change it to B.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna disagree because I understand, I guess, some of your thought process, but really, if, if you look at this area, it, it is residential all but the old nursery that's on the backside of that one street. So, you know, you're gonna connect on Second Street, Red House Road, that is a highly-traveled road, right? But, and, and uniquely, because I own all the properties, I own all the units on the other side of the street from her, all the rental units and all the units that Gilbert owned on the backside of her. So that's all heavily, I guess, residential. So I, I, you guys can step in here, I think you'd have a tough time making it a B zone, uh, given some of those dynamics. But I think across the board, and, and when I think, when I thought of this project, Linwood kinda came to my mind because it's, it's got a lot of acreage with it and it's a house that you can do this light assembly at without putting a lot of pressure on, on a neighborhood. So I wouldn't see no reason you couldn't do it in R1, R2, whatever it was, as long as they, they came to a plan that would meet your conditional use requirements, parking, uh, traffic flow, noise, all those things that she would still have to comply with. So I don't, respectfully, I don't think you would be opening it up to a business because it would be the same thing in my mind as a church or a park. You've got some cars, but it's not like you have a mass influx like you would at a drive-thru or something like that. So I think it's a very light use. I, I, I'm not sure that, be a business zone would be appropriate there and I would defer to them to that, but.
But it's not really a residential thing either. It's obviously not. I mean, you know, you're, you're having venues, you're making money off it, it's, it's a business. So I, I know why they don't wanna do that and I understand that.
That's, that's the use. It's, it's not, it's not a heavy business use. It's, it's almost what I would consider a short-term, term rental. You know, if you wanted to make it into an Airbnb, it would be a short-term use of that. And I'm, I'm just using that example. Or let's say you wanna make it a bed and breakfast, which is what you would see in maybe some houses like this, still low-intensity use. There may be an event there for three or four hours and then nothing for days. So it's not, I, I understand what you're saying, but I don't think it's a true business use.
It wouldn't be something like a daily use all the time, would it?
Yeah, it just wouldn't be. And I, and at, at least for this property, I, I, my perception is that there's a lot of support for this use as opposed to other potential uses that it could be, so.
So if, if we can approve it with conditional and you kinda help us set the standards for, or that's a different, I don't know who does that boards, I, I don't know who would set all the standards, but.
Well, if, if you chose some zones or zone or whatever, you know, you would like, you know, we would, we would apply that once the applications come in or a development plan or, or what have you. If, if it doesn't meet that criteria, then you're off to the Board of Adjustments or if you're not in that zone, you're off to a conditional use to see if you can get that. One thing that's happening here is to understand that, you know, an assembly, I ca, I just wanna refer to an assembly, we're, we're lacking that descriptive term in our land use, um, charts. So I think, ever how this goes, I think it'd be wonderful if we, if we got something, you know, whatever you all would like to decide. And then if it was inclusive of this property's zoning, fine, we, we can move forward with, you know, regulations and things that we'll need. And we'll handle that downstairs, but we gotta get there. So if we don't have, uh, a zoning listed for this type of use, we're sort of dead in the water. The only other option then would be to seek a conditional use just for the property and that would go before the Board of Adjustments. And then that would be up to them if they were to allow that.
I hope it, you know, I would hope that it would do very well and, you know, you're gonna be putting a lot of effort and a lot of money into it and all that. But I, I have got a daughter getting ready to get married and I've been to a, a lot of wedding venues and these things are booked well in advance, like every week. So you think that you, I hope it works good for you, I hope you got somebody there every week, but that is a lot of people, you know, you think about it because they will all, all kinda come in, en masse, they may dribble out when they leave, but they'll be coming in because they have to be there at a certain time. You could have, you know, a couple of hundred people easily coming in all at one time that everybody else kinda has to contend with, just to fall in, but in the residential area.
And I, and I, that's a, that's a good observation, but I think we would come to the, to the city with a plan for all of that. That's, that's the backfill. He's right, right now, there's no definition in a comprehensive plan at all for this and that's what we've struggled with, trying to, trying to fit it into a class and into a space. So that's what, the only thing you're doing is giving us the opportunity to try to put a, a shoe into that space, uh, and by definition, be, be able to put a plan together so we know what the parameters of that would be to come forward.
We're not gonna know about that.
So Kevin, really, if we just classify this as an assembly and allow assemblies on conditional uses, it goes back to you?
It would, it would go before the Board of Adjustments.
Well, I mean, if, okay.
As, as a conditional use, uh, they would present a development plan or a plan.
A plan.
And then we would intake that, we would look at the chart, see the conditional use. Board of Adjustments would be then identified, they'd be put on that agenda, they would go before that board, have a much same, a similar discussion like we're having now, and then a judgment would be rendered for that particular property. Uh, if, if that board deems it being okay, then they would or would not get that conditional use. And then if they do, that's, that will happen.
Or we just classify it as an assembly, whatever you wanna call it, and then, okay, which zones that assembly can go in. And then that would get away from the Board of Adjustments altogether.
You, you could. Some may be permitted, some may be conditional, depending on what you would like to choose. If one is not listed, then it, that, that is a message that you're dead in the water.
Yeah.
It's, we've visited this, uh, um, ordeal here and we've chosen and, you know, it's moving forward, let's say, I'll use I-2. We can't do it in I-2. And then somebody has a piece of property that strangely in I-2 and they wanna do, you know, a wedding venue, the, the answer from us as staff would be no.
Because it's not listed in the plan.
Yeah.
So you're, you're dead in the water going in when the I-2 may be completely perfect location for it or a brewery or a, a restaurant or whatever it might be that would toe-hold into that, okay, but isn't. And that, that's an example, it's not necessarily listed. We're just looking to be listed so that we can come forward with the plan and we know, like, our base parameters of what we have to present.
So what verbiage do we need to make this a, an assembly and put it into the works?
Well, what, what we'll have to do is, is entertain discussion. Tyler, did you present them with a, a list? What we'll need to do is choose zones that, that, that you deem appropriate to whether it be conditional or permitted or not. Once that is chosen and, and official vote for that, then we would send that to City Commission. Once that is approved, that will go into my development ordinance and then we're off and running as to where we need to be to, to create a path forward. So if, if you happen to want suggestions or anything of that nature, you know, we can certainly take those suggestions and create a, a listing for you for review or you're very welcome to choose some zones and, and if you deem appropriate to vote on that and we'll make sure that, that is listed in a chart and we'll, we'll move that up the chain to the City Commission.
So we go, we go through the zones now, one by one, is that what we're supposed to?
We would have to, they, whatever they would, uh, they would pick the zones and we ju, I mean, they would have them, then we just pick whatever zone, conditional along with it, what we want.
I mean, it's.
I would encourage you to make it a conditional use in every zone because you're gonna fall back to whatever the specifications are for each zone. Just because you opened it up to each zone doesn't mean you're opening the door to it. You've still gotta meet all your requirements. So why wouldn't you do it in every zone and let whoever had this light assembly, whatever it might be, come forward with a plan?
I, I would say a condition is what, what I would be thinking.
Because then you're still controlling it.
In, in a sense, I would caution, you know, not in every zone. I, I would not recommend I-1, I-2, or AG.
No.
Or MP, maybe.
If, you know, a lot of folks might like AG, but, you know, AG, it's just a placeholder. And if we get something like a social assembly that's approved, it will never be anything else than Ag. And we'll be left with Ag for who knows how long.
You're going to have to change the definition of R1, or R2, or R3 then. Because it says nowhere near about that, that's social assembly.
Well, it's with the conditional use.
Still, you have to, if you're going to make it even conditional, you still need to change the definition of what R1 is, or R2, or R3. You can't just say conditional and then just say, okay, I'm going to put it in residential. There has to be some change to it. Because we've even got to split up so that it's the size a lot. So if you put it in R1, the lot's only going to be so big, it's all you can do.
And, and that's where, you know, limitation's going to fall. If, if they can't make parking requirements or any of those bells and whistles on a lot, like I say, it's an eighth acre, super tiny, then it won't work because we'll calculate parking most of the time based on seating, in this case, for an assembly. And that may indicate, I'll be facetious here, that may indicate a hundred parking spaces. So naturally, that is not doable.
I mean, you could add that in, you know, to the definition, but you're going to have to do something. You can't just keep it R1. That makes no sense.
Well, you would keep it R1, you would change the conditional uses in R1. You'd change that part of the ordinance that deals with what's a conditional use, right?
And then the guidelines are determined in-house, depending on the space and the occupancy and the needed parking. So if I buy an eighth acre lot and decide I want to try to do a wedding venue, that's not going to fly with us, it won't be approved as a conditional use to do that. If it's probably like this, and obviously it has plenty of space, well, yes, that'll work.
And I think what you're both saying is that, you know, if it didn't meet all the regulations, it would never get to BOA in the first place, yeah.
Right.
So like an R3, it's just not going to fit in there, so that one, or an R2, those are two, you know, that's not going to work. And I, I don't know. I think it...
Well, there's a million different scenarios to be the devil's advocate if you had an R3 lot that had nothing on it at all. And it was a quarter acre or a half acre. You certainly could do that.
Okay.
That's why I was advocating, and I understand not every zone, but for as many zones as you can, because just how many residential homes are there left in Richmond that are on four acre lots, right? What if that were a duplex on that four acre lot? You would want to be able to do the same thing, whether it was R1 or R3, just from a use standpoint, so.
So you could make a motion tonight and get a second and vote on making this a conditional use in all zones except for industrial and agriculture.
And mobile home.
Am I missing something there, or?
MP, I believe.
Yeah, that's right.
PSPs and things.
But I don't understand against agricultural, because there are a lot of wedding venues that are in barns.
That's true.
So I wouldn't deny that. So...
That would be more appropriate.
Sure.
Actually, in agricultural. I mean, you would put it in that, et cetera, rather than residential. I mean, because the land's more, it can handle the traffic better, probably.
It's, it's just a realization through the comp plan efforts that, you know, we're, we don't want agriculture land as a city. So, you know, if we start introducing or permitted uses within agriculture, then we're able to develop agricultural land through these assembly, little holds and things. And, and I ain't saying it will or won't, but you could run into some things that will become placeholders forever.
And I think to his point, you could always, you talked about doing a zoning change application. If you had an agricultural tract and you didn't have that in there, you could always come in and ask for a portion of it to be rezoned. Would probably be a much easier, a much easier application than something like this. So I mean, but I get your point. I mean, if it's a big open tract, that scene would fit this well, so your point's taken there, yeah.
I'd just like to see us move the ball forward tonight and not have to come back in thirty days, and then another thirty days to the commission, and then it'd be a second reading, wouldn't it? At the commission level, so you're looking at, if you don't push the ball forward tonight, you're looking at least sixty days before something's in place, probably longer than that, actually.
So the only places right now we don't want it would be industrial? Or do we just make it across the board?
If I may, and I think the thinking, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the thinking is not I two or I one. I would assume you wouldn't want it in a professional office space, thanks, engineers, doctors, and all that. Public park, PSP, public semi-public. We said yes to Ag as conditional, yes?
No.
No, yes?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, we want to...
Wait, okay. PUD, so think farms at Barnesville. No, I would assume that. Mobile home parks, I would assume not. But then everything else would be a, does it meet the regulations or not?
So, and you said PUDs, no?
Yeah.
Okay. So, do we want to make a motion for conditional use of a wedding venue, oh, of assembly?
Assembly, social assembly.
Yeah, you'll have to.
Social assembly.
This is complicated.
And everything...
It is, it is.
For, with the exemption of I one, I two, MPs, and PUDs? And you said...
P one and Ag.
P one and Ag.
And what?
An Ag.
Yes, an Ag, okay.
That would be, that would be the, that would be the motion if you're making it.
That's the motion I'm making, don't make me restate it.
Perfectly fine.
Okay.
Any more?
I'll say it.
Okay. Commissioner Francis?
Yes.
Commissioner Short?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
I have a misgivings about doing an R1, and R2, and R3, I really do. So I'm going to say no.
Okay. Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miles?
No.
Commissioner Stell?
Yes.
Okay, thanks so much. Motion passes.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, thank you all, is the zone determination for shooting range. Kevin, is anybody here for that?
Yes. Well, again, it's sort of a, a repeat. We, we need a zoning classification in our use charts for, you know, firearms in a firing range. So perhaps with our experience from our, our last item, what we're after is an effective zone that you feel is necessary or compatible with the firearm range.
Let me ask you, what, the location he's at now wants to put it, what, what zone is that?
I mean, what is?
The location right now where he's at is business?
It is a B three.
B three. So we couldn't leave it a B three with a shooting range?
Well, what you would want would be to create the term shooting range or associated firearms or shooting range. This would include archery all the way down to slingshot, you know, so this would be the whole scenario that we would take in. If you allow something like that, choose, choose a zone, we would create a home for that in our land use chart. And then, again, we would then be able to move forward. We're not here for, you know, what efforts are put in place, we, we would have to handle that. The only thing that we would need from this body would be, where can we do that? And so we can look, we can look at a lot of different zones, naturally. Some are going to be pretty easy to determine, that it's not necessary there or inappropriate. But, you know, these, if you do a firing range, I can assure you that the safety involved with those, with that equipment, areas, whatever you want to call them, they're pretty intense. I've, I've seen Daniel's list that he's, he shared with me, and I would not worry about safety. That's going to come. We just, we, even noise.
Noise, ventilation, noise, capturing lead, I mean, there's some serious guidelines to it.
They got to dispose of lead, they have to be checked, I believe, I don't know how many, but monthly, sometimes even weekly. They're, they're pretty intense facilities, so...
We've got three zones, yeah. We've got agricultural, you have B three, and you have industrial. Industrial sounds good. I personally think agriculture will still be fine, but you don't like things under agricultural, you totally. We just said that.
So straight Ag?
Of course, we're trying to get rid of them as much as we can.
I think it's a great place for it, but...
It would be, I, I did my firearm training on a farm. Super safe, but now I didn't do it in, in a enclosed area, it was against a bank.
Yeah, but this will be, if you put it on agricultural.
But I guess, what I'm getting at, he wants to put it in the same location where he's got his business now, right?
Which is B three.
Yes.
And, you know, how, how are you going to do that, change that?
It's already conditional.
There is no firing range there right now.
Huh?
There is no firing range there now?
No.
Right, I'm sorry, there isn't, and so this would be allowing him to...
All he's got is just a gun store there.
Right, this would allow him to go ask for one from BOA.
Because we don't have a classification where that needs to be.
Yep.
I, I'm thinking B three and industrial. Ag, I don't know, I can't figure that one out.
If, if it's B three now, right? And his, and his, and his place is right, they right there next to each other.
That would make it work for where he is.
That's what I'm saying, to make it work for that.
Yeah.
Keep it as a B three. You think that, Kevin, would it be?
Yeah, I mean, with, with what I know about the technicality involved in what is necessary to achieve a shooting range, I would not be too afraid of any of our business zones. Certainly some are in strange locations, B twos and things, might be right in the middle of town, might be a little strange. I think highway business, B three, you know, across the board, we have B threes a little everywhere, don't get me wrong. But under the definition of B three, that is highway business that should be outside of our core. So if we look at that language of what a B three is, this will push shooting ranges and that activity to the outskirts of town, which one would assume, at least I would, we would want them. Agriculture, certainly outside our core. Industrial, be careful, we have several industrial lots, which might introduce a whole new world to a use for those lots. Estrel Street is contaminated with industrial lots that are much bigger than this room. You might open up an opportunity if you list industrial. We would always check with our industrial board or anything down there, they have rules, regulations, covenants, and restrictions and things. So, you know, even if you allow it, it doesn't mean in some of our industrial area that it would make it that far. But you could certainly include it because we have other industrial zones peppered all over the city. And again, you may open up opportunity for those tiny lots.
When I, just as a note, when I spoke to Mr. Stipes yesterday about industrial, he had, personally, he had no issue with conditional in I one. He just recommended nothing in I two because everything in the industrial park is I two. And so he would prefer that to not even be an option at all, which is what's been trying to be, so.
And by taking that out, you would certainly avoid a lengthy process of a no. So if it's not allowed, keep it in an I one, that would, that'd be great.
I don't know that our population can support more than one gun range.
Support what?
More than one gun range. I mean, you've got, did I know of maybe one in Lexington, maybe two?
Buds.
Yeah, and I think it looks like it's an industrial, I've been up there several times.
It's off of Eastland, it's back around the Eastland Drive.
It's all industry back there, isn't it?
Right around the Eastland Shopping Center.
The reason they don't have many is because it's so expensive.
Yeah.
And the liability.
That makes sense.
Yeah, it really is. I think they've got enough here, but it's, of course, you've got somebody going to have deep pockets to build this and insurance. And you got to have, like Rob said, you got to have a fair amount of people.
Yeah.
And you got to be in the right area, and so these lots may be expensive to get, too.
What's a B four?
B four is, is best described as a dying zone. B fours are our shopping centers. The last B four that succumbed to that was, what was that, Heritage? Heritage Place had a B four in the front of it. That, that returned to a B three, which was most rightful to it. But I believe the Richmond Mall, the carriage you just looked at, Peddler's Mall, that's a B four. But there, I think there's only three left.
Yeah, there's actually, I know there's...
Well, is there any more conversation on this?
Okay.
So are we looking for...
A motion?
To determine a zone tonight?
I thought so, yeah.
Yeah.
Do what?
We're, we're actually looking for you all to designate some zones for these tonight. If you're comfortable doing so, if not, we can wait till the next meeting. But again, it's nice to move the ball forward.
I think you need to stay out of Ag.
Okay.
If you don't want to grow on Ag, stay out of it. Otherwise, you're going to end up with the same issue that we just discussed with the assembly areas.
Yeah.
So you don't want to do Ag? Well, I mean, I'm going, I'm going to cause a problem here, like we did, you know, with the...
I think it needs to stay in B three and I one, maybe.
Yeah, I think so, too. Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the shooting range zoning for B three and I one.
Okay.
I'll say it.
Those you make?
Yes.
Commissioner Francis?
Yes.
Commissioner Short?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins? Commissioner Miles?
Yes.
Commissioner Stell?
Yes.
Thanks so much.
Other business?
I've got one for you tonight. We have, I would say there's approximately eight, nine residents on Baker Court that want to be rezoned to R one. So currently, currently, I think they're R two, the zoning classification. And when they got their nine-one-one fee letters, it was brought to their attention that they were actually in an R two and didn't even know it. And so there's been about nine of them here on Baker Court. If Tyler can pull that up. They want to be rezoned from R two to R one. That's it, right there. I didn't bring the list of addresses with me, but I certainly can provide them to you. There's about, I think there's nine of them.
Oh, that's right next to the cemetery.
Yeah, that's cool.
Yeah, it's all residential.
And they're just concerned about it being R two and somebody buying the house next to them and turning it into, you know, rental with several people in it.
There's already quite a few of those.
Yeah, there is.
I got it. Maybe a suggestion on this?
Yes, please.
From a legal counsel. If they do that, is there any way that they can sign off on it? I don't like this, want this like we had on High Street.
Absolutely.
When they came back.
I made it clear they would, they would have to fill out an application.
They would have to fill out the application and sign off on it.
That's right.
Rather than wait and then come back to change their minds, and oh, I don't, I decided I didn't want to do it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm with you. They, they sent me a tablet sheet with a list on it, with a signature next to it, and I called the gal that's kind of spearheaded in this, and I told her, I said, we got to do official applications just for what happened on High Street.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm for it, but you know, I just think that they need to sign off on something and don't change their mind, yeah. Don't change their mind on it.
That's right, I agree with you all.
So you're going to do it house by house? Because there's already a lot of rent.
Yeah, we'll actually give her the application, she'll distribute them, bring them to us, and then we'll start, we'll facilitate the process first. It'll all be official on an application. Yeah, we'll actually give her the application. She'll distribute them, bring them to us, and then we'll start, we'll facilitate the process first. It'll all be official on an application. Yeah, that's the best way to do it. And a time limit, like you said, Dr. Short, when they can, they have to have them submitted by this date, and no, nothing afterwards. Would you all entertain that if we went down that road?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. We'll start the process.
Okay, we got a deck report. Any reports on anything?
I just had a, uh, sort of cheat sheet. Uh, next month, you may see an item on the agenda pertaining to, you know, shelters. I've put together just some things. We don't, we're not, we don't need to talk about it, but you can take home with you. It's something I've sort of put together to jar the memories, see, show you some things to, to be aware of as we move forward. Um, but most likely, that will be an item on next month's agenda. So I'll, I'll pass these out at the end of the meeting for you. And just take them home, think about them, make an airplane out of them, what you, whatever you'd like to do. And then, uh, but, but that's all I have.
The, the one other item I had is, you probably saw this in the newspaper, but the city did receive a two million dollar grant to purchase uh, new property for industrial and a business park. And so the, the Burden Farm off of Duncanon, which sits where the big Ramsey house is, just to the left of it, yeah, thank you. Um, we're in the process. We'll have a meeting next week with the Richmond Industrial Development Board and move forward with a closing date on that property. It's a hundred and eighty-nine acres right here. It fronts Duncanon. It backs up to our industrial park three, and it is currently, um, zoned agriculture. And we'll be coming to you all to have it rezoned to I two. Uh, we've done all the due diligence of phase one, of phase two. Um, there is an archaeological mound on the property where the entrance needs to go. So we're working with the transportation cabinet about moving that entrance down, or working around it. But, um, we are running out of industrial development property, and this is a really good project for us.
And this is closer to, uh, the Berea Road or closer to seventy-five?
Uh, closer to Berea Road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's actually this big section right here.
Yeah.
Is that right where the, what is that building there for the health?
Uh, extension office.
Yeah. Is it near there?
Um, I'm trying to.
It's right down the road. Extension office is on down.
Right here.
Okay.
So you come up around the corner. There's a row of about seven houses in that corner.
Yeah.
And then the next property over is the farm that we're purchasing.
Yeah, okay.
And like I said, it, it, it attaches to the back of our industrial park three.
Right.
And, uh, this is the third PDI grant we've got in a row. So it's, it's, the purchase price is about four million, seven hundred forty-four thousand dollars. We got a two million dollar grant. The city's matching the difference. Um, Duncanon Lane is really the golden corridor for industrial development with all the utilities in place, so.
Thank you.
Can I, can I comment about the homeless thing, problem that we got, you know, what we wanna do about it, et cetera? When you're talking about that, should we have a workshop and talk about it before we just get something presented to us as to be?
Absolutely.
I think that's a very difficult situation. And, you know, do you want to see inside, you know, the city numbers, do you want to outside the city? What do you want? How do you wanna handle this? Cause this is a long-term problem that you need to have some solutions to. And so far, everybody's having solutions in most places. So.
We've got, we got a representative right, right there.
We talked about that after she went to a meeting.
So I, I think it would be a good first to go to a workshop, get some information about it, sit down and talk about it, so that when we come to the meeting, we're a little more educated about it.
Did y'all make it to Louisville?
Huh?
I was just asking her.
I'm sorry, we're going this week.
This week, okay. So I say maybe after they come back from there.
Okay.
After they come back from Louisville.
Yeah, I think work sessions would be very helpful for, before big agendas.
We want a really good solution. We gotta decide where we're going with it, what we're gonna do, et cetera. Where we're gonna place, you know, facilities to help them, et cetera, for food, shelter, et cetera. So we need to kind of get our ball, get everything out.
I think, uh.
Kevin, I do got one question. Where are we at with these developers and their hydrant heights and sidewalks that they didn't wanna pour in the spring? And we've had hot weather now for four months.
Well.
Not to put you on the spot, I'm just curious about that.
Uh, no, I caught up with David some time ago, and we, we had a long discussion where we're at. And, uh, he's, he's my hammer. He's done a great job. He is ensuring, uh, you know, we, we had a long training session, and, uh, he's thinking ahead. He, I'm very proud of him. He's actually looking for any of these new developments. Uh, we're even doubling it up if, uh, we find on individual house, uh, construction after subdivisions are built. We get the opportunity to go back as planning and zoning to look at the yards, side yard soils, this, that, and the other trees, what have you. And if that builder has covered that fire hydrant up, it's a second opportunity to make sure at the end of the line that, you know, things like that are taken care of. We have got several of them sewed up. Um, I do know that there has been in-house, uh, decision-making for the completion of some of these subdivisions. Um, most now are actually on schedule. There, we've got a few coming up, but the, uh, currently, there's, there's still legal eagles. Um, and, but we've already had conversation. What we're experiencing now is that we're getting out in front of it, you know, whatever happened in the past doesn't matter twenty, thirty years ago. We're out in front of it now, so our developers are now communicating. They understand the process. They know their time constraints. And even if they forget, we're, we're sending them a letter. David is out there constantly. Um, G I S is now inhabiting the subdivisions and, and he's aware of what's going on, along with myself. So we, we've got a real watchful eye on where we're at. So we don't get into that shape that we were in that we had to start cleaning up, so.
But where we were at this past fall, how are those guys doing with their work that they committed us to be done?
Most, most have.
Deadline.
Yeah, most have completed them. Um, I know I've released three letter of credits, you know, after you all have, uh, approved them and stuff. We've got, I think we'll have two more coming up probably in the next two months. And, and they're chasing, you know, to get these things done before winter time gets here. But, uh, uh, it's, it's looking overall fairly well. Uh, it's, it's not a problem that I would consider as severe as it was. Uh, we've chopped probably sixty, sixty-five percent of that away. And now it's just developments that are the extenuation of phases. And so as long as they're in there working, we're not dealing with individual subdivisions that have come and they've went, and they're done, and we're having to chase people. The folks that we're working with are, are phased people, that they have continuing subdivisions. So, so we're, we're looking good overall. And I'd, I'd certainly give you a list of, of all the things that have been updated, uh, currently and, and taken care of, and what we have left. I can certainly provide that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Someone else? Not a juror?
Can you run, should we adjourn?
I'll. I'll, if you.
Thank you all.